We are running just a shade late, so I would like to move on to the 5:30 PM workshop regarding business license fees. And on that agenda, the first item to discuss is a discussion of the history of business license fees in West Jordan. Brock.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going to just want to go over a brief history real quick of what we have provided and discussed in the past, since this has been going on for some time. Back in 2017, the business license study was commenced and commissioned from Zion's Public Finance Incorporated. That study was accepted by council in May of this year. It was then reassigned back to the Community Preservation Department Business Licensing Rental Dwelling Division to look at the study and rethink the numbers and the process in which it had taken place. We did that, and the study shows the maximum allowed by law that we can charge for a business license. We took the disproportionate service costs that the study allows for fire, EMS, and police services based upon a call per service average. That average was based on a single-family owner-occupied residence. They allowed .5 calls per service a year is what the average was. So they took that and went above that for the business classes. Utah state law changed in 2018. They require now that the rental dwelling portion has the study and has to stay within the confines of the study for business license or for their rental dwelling licenses. So what Zion's has done is taken that study, and they have figured the cost of a call for service for police as well as fire. They've taken the calls above that average base of .5 and attributed a dollar amount per minute to what those calls cost. And the amount of time after interviewing employees and going through police department and everything else, and what they've done is attributed that those calls per service cost X amount, as well as the governing of an issuing of the licenses and the regulatory cost of the licenses as well. They came up and issued their study in saying, "This is what the disproportionate service costs are for this business class. Currently, we are charging businesses a flat rate between $75 and $300 and a per-employee charge for their business license. $3 for a full-time employee, $1.50 for a part-time employee." That is no longer recommended because all businesses have to be charged by class based upon the business itself. So the hospital would be different than a doctor's office. So the study did not separate the medical and the gyms. We've had those separated, so in front of you, you have a new study with those separations.
Those are by size, is that correct? By square footage?
No.
Is that how the separation is? At least I'm noticing that on gyms, that there's those less than, what, 45,000 square feet and those above, or something like that?
Correct. Gyms are separated by square footage. Medical is separated by medical professional, being your doctor's office, your general practitioner, family practitioner, and medical centers, like Jordan Valley Hospital.
Okay.
So what they did is I took the disproportionate fees that the study suggested could be charged by state law, and originally it broke them down, taking 25%, 20%, 15%, and 10%, and used those as possible options to reduce from the study to charge for the business licensing, since they no longer recommend we utilize the per-employee charge. Well, with the last spreadsheets and the last proposal we had, included in that was the fire inspection, building inspections. With the sheets you have now, the spreadsheets you now have, we've no longer included fire inspections, building inspections, in those. Fire inspections are every other year, and buildings inspections are not done on a regular basis, they're a case-by-case basis. So we have subtracted those from there as well. Those will be done as needed and will be billed through those departments, not through business licensing. So it doesn't show that the business license seemed to be a little inflated with adding those costs in there. So the costs that you see on those sheets in front of you are strictly administrative costs for the issuance and regulation of the license, as well as reviewing through the planning and the building department for each application. So I do have, I've issued, or I've given to you and provided to you through email last night, and on the back two pages of that study, I've also provided to you the top end and the bottom end versions of the 10% of the disproportionate and a 25%. And there's two versions of those. One is with a $70 base fee that the study recommends and a $100 base fee that is something that, in discussing with staff, that staff feels is appropriate. Now, the separation and the difference that we've come across with the study is state law, in reviewing state law further, the attorney's office, David Quahley and Jared Tingey, have seen the state law requires a study be done for home occupa-- or, excuse me, not for home occupations, but for the good landlord program. That's what the study is required for. State law indicates that business licensing doesn't require the study, just that we enact an ordinance in order to charge disproportionate fees. So the sheets you have show a $70 base fee and a $100 base fee. Currently, and for the last 14 years plus, we've charged a $75 base fee in business licensing. Around the valley and the ones that I have researched into, the majority are $100 plus for their base fees. So I am, hopefully you've taken a look at that, and I am open for any feedback. I have received feedback from Councilmember Anderson over this last week and have looked into some of the ideas that he has provided as well.
I do have a question, and it's just helped me understand mostly. In your email that you had sent, it says, "We are currently projected to bring in revenues of $400,261 using our current licensing system." So in looking at the spreadsheet of, this one is 70 base plus 10% disproportion, proportionate, it's at 366,289. So basically, if we were to, and help me understand, if we adopted this particular spreadsheet, it would actually bring in less funds than what we are now, is that correct?
Correct. The study, according to the Zion's study, by using 2017 numbers, business licenses and the way that the licenses are currently being done and issued and fees being assessed, they estimated about that $400,000 in revenues. In the breakdowns that I've provided, and I'm not sure, Mayor, which sheet you're looking at--
It's a 70 base plus 10% disproportionate, that's the one I'm looking at.
Okay. So you're looking at the $366,000 revenues?
Correct.
Yes, according to that, compared to what Zion's has estimated we would bring in under our current system, we would be reducing by about $34,000.
And do you have any idea about how much we are spending, or what's the cost associated with the business licensing division?
You know, I don't have that number offhand.
While Brock is looking into that, I'll just let the council know, we do have a member of the Zion's team here, should you have questions you want to address. Aaron's, I think over my shoulder, right shoulder, if you can just wave him, he's here if you want to address directly.
He's got, he's raising his hand back there.
I'm deaf, thank you.
You know, Mayor, I do not have the operating cost of the division. I can get those two and four with those to you. And also, as a reminder, I know this is on as a business item this evening. Hopefully, I will be taking whatever input and feedback I can get back from you tonight. I don't know that we'll be able to take action on any of these proposals tonight. If you're ready to, your staff report, and the information in here is not in your packet from the prior council meeting. So I would hope to have this back on the agenda the first week of December with the final staff report and the recommendations that you may have from this evening.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. And this is really loud, so I'll just step back a little bit, or maybe I'll use Councilmember Jacobs. So on page 14, and I don't know if Zion's Bank can speak to this, the total fixed and variable overhead costs, table 11, indicates that the cost, and this is everything administrative services, variable costs are administrative services provided to each department for the number of employees in the department, and it's showing about a $5.6 million. Is that, is that accurate? Is that the cost for us to do business licensing? Page 14, table 11.
Sorry, let me just look ahead for just a moment here. Right, so in the course of doing this report and this study, and let me preface this by saying that this wasn't one that I necessarily wrote myself personally, so that's why I got to take a moment and look through it, because it is one that I have taken ownership of, because the employee who did handle it is no longer with us. So from what I know of the process that he took, is he spoke with, and these are numbers that come straight from the budget as well. He took these numbers and he allocated them as overhead. So this would be the cost that it goes into.
Okay, so what you're saying, Zion's is saying, is that our cost to handle all business licenses and the inspections and everything with all departments is $5.6 million a year?
I know that this number came from the budget. To say that specifically, I'd have to look more at the budget, to be honest.
Okay. And then Brock, just so we have it out in the public, the things that we had talked about is maybe getting rid of the employee count for the, just eliminate that, we just have the base and the development services, not count employees.
Correct.
And then bundling some of these classifications. The concern that I have with all the classifications is that it's going to result in a lot of our businesses having to call City Hall to find out, "Now which category am I specifically?" And I think if there's a way where we can bundle these, for example, on your spreadsheet, it had, I'm going to find where it is, under alcohol licenses and all but one are $500. We have on-premise beer, off-premise beer, special events, seasonal manufacturing tavern, wholesale.
It's on the spreadsheet, it's not on the page.
It's the email spreadsheet that--
Which one is it?
It's the email spreadsheet that Brock emailed out yesterday, and I'm looking at the $100 base fee.
It's the same as the last page in your packet.
Okay, so say, all right, so it's the last page in the packet.
The $100 base and 10% or 20%?
I'm using a $100 base fee and 10% disproportionate. But if you go down to row 48, that category, there's five, there's 10 alcohol categories, all of which are $500. I don't know that we need to do 10 categories of alcohol licenses, I think we can just do an alcohol business pays $500, according to this chart, and it deals with on-premise, off-premise, special events, seasonal manufacturing tavern, wholesale, if that makes sense. So instead of having 10 categories, we've just reduced it to one. If you're dealing with alcohol, there's this disproportionate fee.
And right now, we currently have 10 licenses that are being utilized. We are looking as part of the next step with redoing the licenses to get it down to, hopefully, two or three licenses. The difference with the alcohol licenses is certain licenses require different things, like the solicitor license requires review from myself on the background investigation stuff, where the alcohol license for something else may go to the police department, and they have an application fee, where a solicitor may not. So that's why there's, there are some differences in those licenses that required the breakdown be a little bit different, but we can definitely look to crunch those into more of the same classification, yes.
Right. And what led me to that is West Valley's business license schedule is literally two pages of front and a back, and they have, I think, 10 categories total. It's very simple, so I like simple.
Yeah, I agree. And I was looking at that earlier as well, and there are some, I think we can, I can work with Zion's, and we can maybe work some of those into the same classification in the finance area, where you've got professional services that might be able to fit, and I think that's something that Zion's and I can work through as well.
And I do like some of those breaking out, broken out by square footage, you know, so smaller businesses don't have as much as an impact as large. And that's all I've got for right now.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I just have a couple of questions. When I looked at these new ones, and actually some of it's on the old ones, why under alcohol licenses, maybe there's probably something I don't understand, but on-premise, off-premise, and then you list the others, like a tavern, why would an on-premise or an off-premise have a disproportionate fee but not a tavern? Why do some have a, and not other?
Because the tavern license, as well as the manufacturing and wholesale, where the licenses that were approved for the brewery, that we opened up the new code, or approved, you had approved a new code for, for the brewery, that information wasn't available, and it was not an option when the study was commissioned back in 2017. So that has not gone to Zion's and has not been, had evaluated for a disproportionate fee at this time.
Okay, so it's blank because Zion's didn't study it, correct?
Correct, that was not part of the study originally--
Okay.
--when it was commissioned.
Okay, and then help me understand the difference between, in my eyes, a condominium is a multi-unit, but yet on this, they're broke out, so why? And when I look at that again, the disproportionate is different, so can you help me understand that?
Hopefully, maybe Zion's can help with that.
Do you have a question, please?
When I'm looking under resid-- sorry, my ink on my printer is low, these are very light, so residential dwellings, you have multi-units, and then you have condominiums, and under disproportionate, condominiums is a different fee than multi-unit, and so I just, I don't understand how they're different. To me, a condominium is a multi-unit. So why would the disproportionate fee be different?
I'm trying to make sure I look at the right place before I tell you, but--
And I'm looking basically at not pages that were in your study, but pages that--
These, the designation on houses are normally coming from parcel data, so parcel data can be necessarily, can at times be divvied out differently. And so in this case, we would be looking at what has been designated as that spot with a parcel. So if there's a difference on condominium and multi-units, and that's why it would have been that way, because they're listed two different ways, and we're looking at the parcel information to make a designation on where and where these calls are going and what they're going to. So does that make sense? So it's coming from parcel information?
No, it doesn't make sense to me at all, actually.
So I don't know if I have a direct answer for you, other than it's classified differently on the records.
Rob, you had a question? Oh, your name is up here, sorry.
I was just going to say, I don't know specifically this study, I know in other, this discussion that I've heard in the past, historically condominiums have been owner-occupied. They're typically viewed as owner-occupied versus just units, which are not. And historically, and again, this is a very broad general statement, there is generally more law enforcement needs to a non-owner-occupied multifamily housing product than there is an owner-occupied housing product. Now, that's a very general statement, but I've seen that before in some of these studies. I don't know if that's the answer here, but maybe, that may be part of it also.
That would make sense.
But I'm sorry, I can't, I can't specifically tell you, but I don't know if that helps or not.
Well, that could be, that could be the reason. The other thing I would like to convey is I think this is an opportunity to look at different classifications, and some of them we might want to welcome more than others. And I remember, and I don't know why I remember this, and I don't know when it was, Chris probably knows, but there was like something going on about, like Nickel Cave, those kinds of places with archades, and we want, and the council at that time wanted to attract them, but what they found is that our business license structure was not conducive to them wanting to come to our town, and so they relooked at that. So I would kind of like to have this opportunity to structure this in that way. So that would be my desire when we're looking at this, to not just say, "Yeah, let's take sheet A, B, or C, or D," but to say, "Maybe we as a body should say, what do we really want to attract and structure our fees accordingly?" Because I know that, you know, like, if we fill up our city with storage units, there's not much of a tax base there, where if we fill it up with something that has a large sales tax, then that helps our city. So that would be my desire as we look at this.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is a work session, I hope we can be more open and talkative than we were on the dais, but, and I don't want to gear this towards anybody, this is more geared towards us as a council and the city administration as well. I'm sorry that David stepped out. My question would be, and I'm going to put this to the council, if we don't raise any of these fees this year, is it going to hurt West Jordan? Where, I'm looking at the revenue, the revenue is like 220,000 in license fees. Let's say we just kept it that way for next year and didn't raise it next year, are we going to be hurting?
Well, going back to this email that I got from Brock earlier, if we don't do anything, we raise about 400,000, correct?
That's if we continue to do a per-employee, but we still have to buy, we don't buy statute, but they are recommending that we do put them in a business class. Now, I do have another option that would put us in about the same revenues as we are currently sitting, and that is if we go with a 15%. I put that together today, so that's why you have not seen it yet, and I do have that to give to you, if you would like me to give that to you. If we do it as a 15% and we go with the $100 base, that puts us to 438,000 revenues. If we do it at the $70 base, it puts us at 438,000 in revenues. And then we can go ahead with the restructuring of the way we're doing our licensing and move forward with that.
There's assets, because a council member, I always forget Zach's name, he's got two first names. Councilman Jacobs brought up a good point, you know, other cities are doing away with license tax, which I don't want to do. But at the same time, when I look at this, if I'm, and I'm never going to open a business as far as I know, but let's say we're going to go to West Jordan, and I found out that instead of paying $150 or $300 for a business license, I'm now paying 4,780. Well, I'm going to go look in another city where I don't pay $4,780 for a 50,000 square-foot business. I get that there's costs involved, and I understand where these numbers are coming from, and always Zion's put it together. But reality is, I don't know that we even need to raise licenses this year, and maybe we take a deeper look into this over the years so that businesses can prepare, rather than, you know, doing it next week and then saying, "Okay, starting January 1st, you're paying $5,000 in taxes." And I'd be willing to do that, because being on the council for just the short time that I've been on, and watching the council over the past few years, and knowing what's going on in West Jordan, we haven't raised fees, and the city still moves on, the businesses are still happy, and so that's why I kind of put that out to the council today. Maybe we look at this a little bit deeper. You know, I think even if we went and said, "Instead of $100 base, we're going to $200 base," they'd be fine with that. But when you go from a $100 base to a $5,000 base, that's where I have an issue as a business member, if I'm a business person in this city. So I'll go off there.
Question for Brock. Was there a timeframe that the state statute said that we had to make these changes to go into classifications?
Statute went into effect in May of this last year.
So is every municipality supposed to have complied by May, or is there another timeframe in which they can?
Let me, Jared, or David, was there a timeframe that you're on in that statute?
I, was there a time frame in the statute? I do not read. If once the statute's in effect, that is the requirement of the law, is to be doing it the way that the statute reads at that point. I don't believe there's a future date contemplated in the statute. It's a change that we need to make to comply with current state law.
So if we're just out of compliance, does that mean we're just out of compliance? Or is there another penalty that goes with that?
I'd have to review the statute, but I believe that we need to bring ourselves into compliance, and that's the core of this process.
Does compliance include making other businesses pay 5,000 versus 100, or is, no?
No, no, it's, the big change is the per-employee.
Right, and I understand why the costs are there, and I understand why the study was done, but it seems like, and I don't have a microphone, sorry, it seems like we've been living off of this in the city for years. Is that right? No? We've been living off the city for years, we've been fine, and I'm just saying, maybe we look at it a little bit deeper before we make a huge change. Some of these are okay, some of them are $100, some of them are $300. I'm sure the businesses will be fine, but 5,000? I'm thinking 10 times about moving to West Jordan if I'm having to pay $5,000 in license fees.
And I guess the question too would be, what were they paying previously before that? So if they've always been paying 5,000, and they're going to pay 5,000 again--
They're going to be paying 5,000.
That's, do they show, does this show what they were paying previously on any of these spreadsheets?
I don't have that, but if I may inquire, which one were you referring to as the 5,000?
I just, I don't know.
Gyms is one.
Residential assisted living. So we're from a base of $70 and a development of 50 to 5,285. Am I reading that right?
I don't, which one are you on?
This one, assisted living.
That's the thing you just cast out, we're on the--
Yeah, we're on the other one.
It's on the 25% disproportionate.
125?
I'll go over each two of this, the one that says--
Okay, yeah, that is the, that's if we went with a 25% disproportionate cost of the maximum allowed by state law, that is just one of the possibilities.
Right.
Yes.
Chris, didn't you ask that we get the, that what they were paying? Didn't you ask for that to be a column on this?
I did, and I talked to Brock about that just a second ago, and there's a gap in understanding of different functionalities within Excel, how to make that easily presentable. So he does have the information, it's just not in the format that I was imagining.
And I think too, it'd probably be because different businesses may be in the same classification, but one maybe have three employees, the other might have 450 employees. So it'd be difficult to say, just, is that correct?
That's correct. When you've got some businesses, and Councilman Anderson brought this up, when you've got some businesses, large business like Boeing, that's paying for, you know, 500 employees compared to another business that may have five, it's difficult to show, and yet they're in the same industrial classification, it's difficult to show a comparison because you're paying per employee, not by class.
So about the only way you could do that is to take that individual business and show what their business license was last year and what that-- and what that business's proposed fee would be in the coming year, is that correct, in order to be able to have a comparison?
Correct, under this study, Jordan Valley Hospital, for instance, would be paying less under this than they did last year under the per employee charge.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you.
We're, we're all live, so it's now doing it out of medical order instead of the order in which we hit our button. So I was there for it.
Okay.
That, that's okay, go for it.
Well, I, ju- just real quick, 'cause I think we're, we're drifting into, into weeds. So it's just a base fee, whether it's seventy-five or a hundred, that's the base fee. The disproportionate cost is what's required by law, so I don't know.
Permit it, not required.
allowable.
It's allowable, okay, thank you, thank you for that correction. So what the law says is we have to have a study. My feelings are, we get rid of the per employee cost, because I think businesses are fluctuating. They're hiring people during seasons, they're shrinking, and they could be paying more because they started their business in November than if they started their business in February. So that, to me, there's no reason to have a per employee cost for a business license. It should just be a base, the development services, and a disproportionate cost related to calls for service. And I think those categories need to be minimal and not expansive, so that's, that's basically my gist. And I, I, I agree, I'm not, never been in favor of a five thousand dollar business license. However, I have done studies of all the cities in Salt Lake County, and our fees currently are the lowest outside of.
Oh, I agree with that, I agree with them the lowest, but.
There are, there are cities that are doing much better at economic development that have higher fees than us, and this to me isn't about the, the amount of fees. This to me is about being compliant with the law, which we're all supposed to be doing up here, is to make sure that we're following the law. So to me, it's, it's a base, whether it's a seventy or a hundred, the development and a disproportionate cost on a minimal number of categories, that's all I'm looking for.
I'm sure you don't have the answer, Alan, if they're saying be compliant, how can a city like Leighton have no business fees?
The business, law doesn't require them to charge a fee, it just requires you not to charge a fee on certain categories. So if you don't charge any fees at all, then you're not obeying the law.
The law's telling us that we have to go to classifications, which we currently don't do. Our, we have four classifications, a small business, which is seventy-five, a little bit larger business, which is a hundred, an even larger business that I want to say is two hundred or two twenty-five, and then the biggest business that we can get is three hundred. Three hundred bucks.
I just, I liked your idea, you had West Valley's page, what'd you say, one page?
It's one page, the instructions are on the backside, or the, the contact information, and the, and ours is ten.
This is four.
I know, but our, our current business license with everything we have to fill out is ten pages.
Well, these are just options too, these are just options, they're not.
And I get that, I wa- I want to make it simple for us as a city and simple for our businesses, so that they don't have to guess what they're gonna have to pay.
Chris, are you ready, or could I interject?
I just keep, y'all know when you plugged in, so.
I just want to tap into what Councilmember Whitlock said. So that, that arcade store, I didn't want to use their name.
Nickel Cave.
That arcade store that we lowered their fees for did come, and they are now here. Had we not lowered those fees, they would not have come, and so now we're getting more money than we would have with the higher fees. So lowering the fees gave us more money, so that's, that's a very good example.
What do we want to attract? I think, I thought we were all live, what do we want to attract? And kind of use this as an opportunity. I'm okay with saying a base, get rid of the employee count, 'cause I just think that's a lot of work on everybody's part, and probably really inaccurate data anyway. 'Cause today you've got ten employees, and tomorrow five of them leave because your competitor is paying two dollars more an hour. So get rid of that, I'm, I'm comfortable with a base of a hundred. But some of those other things, I think we need to delve into a little bit farther, because to me, it is kind of important to know what they were paying, 'cause I would hate to, you know, I would hate to have us wheelpick on the hospital, 'cause there's only one. You know, what, what if we did raise it, and then they're paying exponentially more, and they say, forget it, we're out of here? That would be bad for our community, so I think it's pertinent that we have an idea of what these places were charging before we give permission to charge them more or less. So I, I kind of need to know a little bit about what they really were paying.
Yeah, I think that's important, and the executive summary in the report too, it points out, this is a page two.
Page what, two?
Page two, yeah. The study calculates the maximum business license fee allowable in West Jordan under current state law. The points down below point out the factors the city may want to consider. As it establishes, new business license fees include percentage change to current fees. So, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because this, this is not saying that you have to start charging everyone twenty-two. I just want to make sure that's understood, that, that you can take into account if it's gonna scare all of your movie theaters away to start charging them three thousand percent more this year than last year, then you don't have to necessarily do that. But this is saying, if you charge any more than this, then now you're charging more than what it actually costs the city, which puts you in a different place, so it's telling you, here's your maximum. If you want to put all the cost one hundred percent on your businesses, charge the maximum amount. If you want to subsidize them a little bit and encourage businesses to come, then you have that opportunity too, 'cause money's gonna come from somewhere, this is just the cost.
So this report, as I see that, all that does for us is tells us how to be legal. Anytime we're lower than whatever this report is, then we're obeying the state law. So that just tells us what our maximum limit is, and we want to make sure we're under that. And we go down to zero, and I'd really like to hear what Chris McCona has to show us.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right, so first of all, before I make any comments, we had the public hearing to hear from folks, we've not had much council conversation. I mean, the public hearing was not the forum for that, that was a public for us to hear from, from the public, hence, public hearing.
Did you say that again?
With the study, I want to be crystal clear on this, we did not ask for them to tell us, what is the maximum we could charge by law? That was not the goal, that was never the goal, we want to make sure we're compliant with the law, but there have been some out there suggesting that the intention of this council was to charge the full amount allowable. No, we just want to know where the boundaries are, so we know what size the field is that we're working in. So having said that, and the public, I don't believe, has seen these, these are the spreadsheets that Brock was referencing that had been provided to the council by email yesterday. And what I did is I tried to take them and consolidate them, he's got a couple different options here, saying what the type of the business is, the base fee, the development fee, at different percentages disproportionate service fee, and then what does it work out, cost per license, and then total revenues. What I would like to see, and I think might help move this along, I'd like to see the data in a little bit different format to help facilitate the conversation. I've got this extra sheet that I just added, and it's, it's just really quick and dirty, something I was doing just a minute ago. Councilmember Anderson was suggesting we have too many types, he'd like to see this list simplified a little bit. So I've added a column in here for like a consolidated like business type, because some of these may be things that we can group together. So for classification purposes, if we need the smaller, this lower level detail, great, but personally, I think we're probably gonna want to work at a little bit higher level and group some of these industries together as we're looking at what the fee structure would be. I'd like to see specifically what, a column showing exactly what that disproportionate service fee is. And I'd like a column here that we can play with the different percentages, rather than having various versions of the spreadsheet. We can set it up, so, I mean, if we were to drop a line or two, there's a cell where you would put in, show me a fifteen percent disproportionate fee, a twenty percent fee. Eighteen point five, where would that put us, so that we have something more dynamic that we can actually play with right here? I would also like to see us consider a fee cap for some of these various different types of industries. Five percent, twenty percent may be appropriate for some industries, but where we're seeing some of these that have a significant jump here, for example, movie theaters, we've only got two of them in the city, there would be a disproportionate service fee of about two grand. Maybe we want to say, let's cap it for those at five hundred dollars or something like that. So I, I would like to see something built in that gives us the option to do that. And then the total potential revenue that would be brought in at that change. And then I'd like to see the last column gives us the current fee, so that regardless of what number we're playing with, if we play with a fee cap as well, then we can see, okay, how does that compare? And then we have a couple of columns over here that show like the dollar variance and the percent variance.
Chris, would you add one more column under H? And do a percentage of a fee change of what that is from where it is now and where it would be, and we can see the difference?
That's in column I.
Variance.
Percent variable.
The dollar variance and the percent reven- variance.
I spoke before that I, okay.
You spoke as I was typing. But this, I, I think something like this would be helpful, because then we could quickly isolate the ones that we think might be more problematic. And it gives us a little bit of tool, I like the idea of a fee cap, because we want, may want to say that we want to do a certain percentage, and we may not want to do a single percentage for every industry. We may want to say zero for some, twenty percent for others, a hundred percent for something else. But maybe we want a fee cap based just a flat dollar amount rather than a percentage, so we go that route instead. It, it just gives us a little bit more flexibility, and we can have a more dynamic conversation. And I think with a structure kind of like that, we could be done with this conversation relatively quick. Hearing the conversation, I think we're at a good start, I think we can more, I think we've more clearly articulated to staff what we'd like. I, I don't know that there's much more we could do without having adjustable dynamic data to further the conversation, and like Councilmember Whitlock said, see what the actual impact's gonna be. If we're just doing this based on numbers and theory without seeing the actual impact of people's checkbooks, we'd be doing a disservice to the community, so I, I, I think this is about as far as we can go today.
I think, if I may, I think having more information, obviously, to make a decision is a good thing. I, I want to, through some conversations that I've had with Mr. Quahley about charging different percentages for different businesses, maybe you, David, you could provide a little feedback on maybe the, your thoughts on that.
I, the conversations we've had are concerned about when you start fee capping some businesses and not others, or charging some businesses ten percent and others eighteen, you have to have a rational basis for those distinctions. Otherwise, you may run into an arbitrary and capricious business licensing standard where for no, no justifiable or rational or evidence-supported reason, you're treating businesses differently. So if you do go down that road, there needs to be an evidence-based reason for capping some and not others. So I would ask then, what some of those reasons would be, because as we're looking at this and seeing substantial, potential for substantial economic difficulty, like we mentioned, going from zero to two grand or, or more.
I'll give you one example that I had looked at, is trying to come up doing exactly what you're talking about, but having a rationale behind it. One that I looked at was on page twenty-seven of the business license fee study, and looked at businesses that had ten or more calls, and started looking maybe at those categories, that maybe they're having an even greater impact than the ones that maybe have one or two calls. Businesses that are having forty and fifty calls, those are, you know, according to the study, have a greater disproportionate effect. And it gives you at least, that's an example of a rationale that I think you could use of saying, these are the businesses that we're gonna target with a disproportionate fee.
Are you suggesting you could add a column in there for number of calls for each business type?
That's correct.
Beautiful, I'd love to see that.
Well, and, and I, and I just wanted to add, because I think we have some large retailers where we have an inordinate number of calls. So if we got with the police department and the fire department and got the number of calls in history, then we could argue that the percentage for those types of high-demand calls could have a, a higher percentage, right?
Correct.
Correct, depending on what the, the data would show, there's no magic bullet as to what the rationale would be. That would need to be something that Kent and Brock and potentially the police department and others would have to study and, and look at. But, you know, a disproportionate number of police calls could be one basis. Or any other evidentiary-based analysis that we could work through with the police department could be sufficient. It would depend on what that data is and how it compares to others.
We, we just need to be scientific in our approach of, of doing this.
Yes, if you're going to treat some businesses different than others in, as far as terms of fee caps, or some being charged a certain percentage and others being charged a higher percentage of disproportionate impacts, there needs to be a rational basis for doing that.
And if the council were to do that, I would recommend that we put a different type of cap on there, that we only increase it like five percent or ten percent per year until we reach whatever we choose that number to be, so that we don't go from charging them a hundred dollars this year to a thousand dollars next year. We do a hundred, then maybe a hundred and ten, and then maybe a hundred and twenty until we reach that. So we don't give that shock syndrome to them. And then also, real quick, we'd like to have something similar to that for attracting new businesses here. So a new business, when they first come in, they get a fifty percent discount the first year, and then a forty percent the second year.
I don't think you can do that.
Fifty percent the next year to help to attract them to come in.
I, I don't think you can do that.
Oh yeah, you could do it.
Legally, could we do it?
Sure.
So, so my thoughts.
One thing, I'm sorry, Councilman, one thing I noticed on your study, or your, your spreadsheet was that you wanted to get a current fee. Now, here's where we're gonna run into an issue, Mountain America employs X amount of, X amount of employees, where the little credit union down the street may only employ a small fraction. That's gonna be two different costs of the business license, so we would have.
The closest you can get, and a lot of asterisks will be in there, because we know it's got apples to apples.
I could come up with some averages, but if we've got, there's fifty-eight banks, we would have to list fifty-eight of them to make sure we hit every one, though.
Would it be the bank in another office?
Pardon me?
Either average or median would be.
I just want to make sure that would be acceptable is to give an average of that, because there's gonna be a, a large difference between Mountain America and say the little credit union down the street.
It's just to get a rough idea of what the impact's gonna be, and some of these where there's only two, it's potentially gonna be more. But, but I think where we're at now, where we're talking about potentially some caps and potentially some issues that we might run into, I'd like to get the spreadsheet first and play with it and see where we do have those issues. And then if as a council, we say, this is the number we're comfortable with, we can articulate the rationale to our attorneys during our next meeting, and they can translate that into some legalese that can be justifiable in a court. But trying to get too much into the details of something that hasn't been built yet, I, I don't think is gonna get us any further than just spinning wheels.
So, so we can move forward, do we, do we, do we kind of give direction on the base amount and the development service amount, so that we're not dealing between seventy and a hundred and trying to do that? We focus on those and then do the work on this?
Dynamic spreadsheet, we can change them on the fly and it won't matter.
Okay, and this is a subtopic, and David's not here, so maybe, Rob, you can relay this, but there was discussion made about how much money the city generates in revenue on business licensing, it was like three or four hundred thousand dollars?
Four.
Four, okay, so in our current FY eighteen nineteen budget, page sixty-three, under licenses and permits, general fund revenues account three two one two hundred, I'm sorry, three two one zero zero zero, business licenses, it's only showing two hundred and ten thousand in our current budget. So we need to get some clarity of which number's right, the two-ten that's in our budget or the four hundred that's? In the study, we don't have a finance guy, but.
It could be that that was the number that was anticipated without the fees being raised, but I'll clarify that with David. That's why it may have appeared in the budget as two hundred, whatever, but I'll, I'll make sure he.
That's two hundred and ten thousand for business licenses and twenty-five thousand for the application fee is what's in our currently adopted budget.
Okay.
So we can probably do some clarification on that.
Thank you, Council, we'll do that.
Okay, for direction, we're just about out of time for tonight, because we need to move on to our city council meeting, but we need to give, we need to give staff some good direction about what we would like to see coming back, and when we want to have them come back, so do we want to have them present again at our, the next council meeting is next week, and I think that's too soon. Do you think it's too soon?
Yeah, I believe the staff reports and, and the things for your packets were due yesterday, as is.
So the first meeting in December. Can you take the information that you've gathered here tonight and come back to council? Do we want to have another work-study meeting early, so we can have a good discussion like this again? At five-thirty on that night, and let me ask council members what they, response to that? Well, the question is, if we do this the first week in December, we won't be able to raise the rates in January, right? So we'll do the rates later?
Our, with working through Munus and, and Mike Oliver, we're probably not looking, as well as billing on a quarterly basis,
as well as billing on a quarterly basis, in a, we're looking at probably not implementing these new rates till, we're looking July 1 now.
I, I shouldn't say raise, I should, should say implement because we may be lowering the rates.
And it's not raising business license fees. And so July 1, we have time to, if we want to do this next time. Is everybody okay with that? If we, if we come back at 5:30 for another work meeting like this to get this, see if we can't get this finalized prior to city council meeting, the first meeting in December? Everybody's okay? So let's plan on that then.
I, I. With that, but I was thinking, 30 minutes is really tough to do that in.
Well, we do the same thing running from 5:30 to 6:30.
Okay. I'm just, I don't like to change the public's time. I would rather do our meeting for this on another day where we can just sit there and work it until we get it done and quit, instead of stopping by the time the city council comes in at 6:30. And I like, don't like changing the city council meeting from 6 to 6:30 and back to 6 and back to 6:30 again. I think it's really difficult for the public to follow that. I like to be more consistent on that.
Other council members want to chime in?
It's, I, there's, there's a lot of us that work and have travel plans related to work that I think impact our ability to meet on, on days other than when our council meeting meets. I, I think if we meet from 5:30 to 6:30, it's not that inconvenient for the public. Because if the public gets here at 6, they get to hear the tail end of this comment before we go into, into council meeting. We also have some things that I think are going to require us to do some study meetings starting the first of the year as we redo all the code for the change in form of government. That's something I don't think we can accomplish on the dais. And, and so my support would be to do what we're doing right now, which is 5:30 on a council night to 6:30. So we've got, we've got a lot to tackle. And we've got to have the new form done March, April, so people know what they're getting into.
And then my thought is, there's no reason we can't suspend the rules during a council meeting to revert to a form like this and make it a little more flexible. So we could still have a meeting regular day, regular time and just break apart into this and just kind of go at it, rather than have an extra day, extra meeting. Might as well just do it all in the same time that's already out there.
So the suggestion is? First meeting in December, 5:30? Okay. With that, we will move on to our city council meeting. We'll take a little three-minute break and get reorganized.
Yeah, I think I've still got, I think I've still got power. Well, I won't use it for a while anyway. So you're welcome to use it for a while.
Alan's in charge of it, but he assigned each of us to a different company.
Check, check, check. Is Michael, Michael Oliver? Got the right one on there?
I guess.
Check, check, check.
Yeah, I did that.
Kind of a one-minute warning for our city council members.
Test.
Oh, now, now I'm working.
One, two, three, one, two. Test, test. I'd like to call our city council meeting to order. We have, we are missing Councilmember Jacob tonight. He is asked to be excused. The other council members are here. We'll start with a pledge allegiance, pledge of allegiance that will be led by Gavin Atwood from Troop 825. Come up, Gavin.
Right to the mic. Please arise and say the pledge of allegiance with me. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Gavin. We have our first business item for A, approved resolution 18-182, consenting to the appointment of Corbin Lee as the Assistant City Manager of the City of West Jordan and authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement and to administer the oath of office. David Bricky.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It is with a great deal of pleasure that I introduce to you Corbin Lee and Corbin's wife, who are present this evening. This is really exciting for the city of West Jordan. Corbin graduated from that school down south. I don't remember the name of it. But he has a master's of public administration. As a result, he's going to provide to the city a background in finance strength that frankly, we need. We need the help that he's going to immediately be able to provide. His work for the last several years has been in the city of Sandy, where he was instrumental in helping the completion of the Hale Theater, something that may have some relevance and experience in this city very shortly, we hope. So with that very short introduction, if I could ask the council to approve Mr. Lee at this point. Thank you.
Are there any questions for our city manager from council? Seeing none, I would be happy to take a motion. Councilmember Whitelock.
I move that we approve resolution 18182, the appointment of Corbin Lee to Assistant City Manager.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Whitelock and a second by Councilmember?
Anderson.
Anderson. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson? Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton? Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey? Vote passes 6-0.
If we could ask the council to come off the dais for a moment for both the swearing-in ceremony and perhaps some photos. Mayor, if I might just finally conclude, the Lees haven't had a vacation in a couple of years. They get, they have a chance to go on an, get on an airplane at 3:00 AM this morning. So I'd ask that Corbin and his wife be excused for the remainder of the meeting.
Well, we're excited. I hope you guys enjoy your vacation. Look for you back on Tuesday. We have two presentations this evening. First was on transportation funding update from Salt Lake County Councilmember Amy Wender Newton. David Bricky.
Thank you. Amy Wender Newton is here, fresh off a good victory. That's nice to have. And has a presentation that we'd like to just share with the council. And if that's all right, we'll just proceed to directly that. Is there any other formal introduction beyond that? Thank you.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. It's a pleasure to be with you today. I just wanted to come and give you a little bit of an update on the transportation funding. Now, I know that we had a lot of discussions going on during the whole debate over, you know, this sales tax increase with the transportation funds in each city doing the resolution. And I, we, we really wanted to make sure we had a solid process that everyone understood, that was transparent. And so I want to talk to you a little bit about that today. Before I start, I want to introduce a couple of people with me. I've got Helen Peters, who is the Regional Development Program Manager over Transportation. And so she's the one who's administering this process. And then Nick Dunn, who works for me. He's my senior policy advisor in the council office. So if you ever have other questions or issues or anything, you can reach out to me or Nick. And we're always happy to talk to you and, and be helpful if we can. So, um, so just to kind of give you a little bit of a background on what we're calling the Transportation Choice Fund. So this is the fourth quarter sales tax funds. As you know from the SB 136 legislation, Salt Lake County is the one who gets all of those funds for the first nine months. And then after the nine months, each city gets the .1, the county gets .05, and UTA gets .1. And so we're just talking about this first nine months of funding that goes directly to Salt Lake County. It's going to be about $40 million. And we want to just kind of outline for you the process that's going through. Now, your staff's aware of this, and I know they've got some projects they'll be talking with you about. But this at least gives you an idea of kind of the process that we're going through. My goal as a council member was to make sure that we have a process that's very transparent, that has rhyme and reason as to why projects are determined. And so I'm going to show you what Mayor McAdams has come up with as his process. And then once these projects go through his process, they'll come to the county council and we'll have final approval on how they will work. So our, our goal is to have projects that are regionally significant transportation facilities or a public transit project of regional significance. So that's kind of what we're looking for. The projects that are not eligible for funding would be any pavement management that provides for roadway maintenance, such as pothole patching, slurry seals, chip seals, asphalt overlays, et cetera, all the road maintenance. Those aren't the kinds of projects we're looking for on this. We're looking for these regionally significant projects. So this just kind of gives you an idea. And you've got in these papers that I've given you this criteria with more detail. But there's five criteria evaluation categories. There's access to opportunity to see which projects have access to jobs and educational opportunities close to where they live. Multi-jurisdictional collaboration, livability, economic innovation, and then how it assists with the WASATCH Choice 2040 or 2050 Plan. There's more detail on, on all of these in your packet that I've given you. And then there's also eight points that can be achieved by using local matching funds. So that comes to 100 points. Now, the nice thing about this process is it's going to be something that your planners will be able to upload, your GIS people will be able to upload in our system. And you should be able to see and know what your point value is before it even goes any further. So you'll have a pretty good idea on that. We've got some great tools we're using. Technology is our friend these days. And so we're using some great technology where we have mapping tools and whatnot as you upload projects, and you'll be able to see exactly kind of what, what your projects look like. Here's just a few screenshots from our system. So with that, just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview on what we're going to be doing. And like I said, this is the mayor's process. So it will go through this process. There's also a steering, or a, I guess a steering committee is the right word, that's made up of some of the mayors from COG, as well as some of our transportation experts that will be looking at these projects. And then they will go to the county council for final approval. So if you have any questions, happy to answer them. Or Helen's here, if she, if there's other questions, I can answer.
We do have some questions. We'll start with Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, congratulations to Amy or just.
You can call me Amy.
I can call you Amy. I, I grew up with Amy in high school and junior high, so congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
Just real quick, you mentioned, so for nine months, the money goes to the county.
Right.
And I know you don't probably don't have the answer tonight. But what kind of projects will that money go towards over these next nine months?
So because we don't have much unincorporated county left, we're really planning to give these these dollars to the cities for projects. And so that's what this process is, is kind of the process that all of our cities will go through to turn in projects, and then we'll score them, and it'll go to the county council for final approval. We're planning to basically use all of those dollars back, give them back to the cities for their projects. So that was something that was a big priority for our council. You'll notice there's not any scoring criteria on whether or not a city passed the resolution for this, so that is not taken into account. It is strictly by the criteria that, that we've outlined here, and, and it'll go to the cities for their transportation projects.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very much like this, at least at first glance, makes it very clear what's, what's being looked for. The request would be, could we get an electronic copy of this sent to the recorder so that the folks who are here in the audience who may not be able to see this tonight could go online in the next couple of days and see exactly what's been shared?
Absolutely.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any dates associated with this? When should we apply and when will we hear back?
Great question. Yeah, the application deadline is on Friday, November 16th. Your staff has already been invited to a couple of meetings that has educated them on kind of what the criteria is, and what the process is for your GIS folks that will be uploading these. So they're aware of the project, the process, but yes, it's coming up, so we'll be looking forward to those and having some decisions in the coming months.
So we submit by the 16th and we hear back by...
We're hoping December, or by January, first of the year, that we have some, some answers on, on which projects will be approved.
Is it all just going to be on the one timeframe, or it will be a repeat again at another time?
We're kind of, this is kind of our first go at this, and so we're going to see what projects come in and, and kind of which ones rise to the top. I don't know if we'll have enough for all 40 million that'll come in. I would guess we'll have far more than that that'll be proposed. But we're going to kind of see what happens, see which projects come in and if they meet the criteria, and then go from there and see if we need to have another application process later on, or if, if the one application process works. Now, keep in mind, after the nine months where we get all of the funds coming to us, there's going to be a time period where .05% of the funds still come to the county. And, and I'm not sure if we're still going to use the same process or do something different. We'll make that decision at that point.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Bricky's got a comment on that. I just wanted to thank the county. They've been very upfront. They've been trying to share this information at the very earliest date, that it got it to us early enough that our staff had met at least three times, I believe internally, but as a larger group, twice. So we understood what the criteria was. We were been working to identify how to get our maximum score of 100 points. And I'll share that information prior to the 16th, but I think the city's going to be in a, excuse me, a very good place.
I don't know what's going on.
Sorry, excuse me, to be competitive when it comes to those requested monies.
Can you share that next week? Because we're meeting again next week.
Certainly. That, one of the ideas was to make sure we were all on the same page, just talking to Dave Murphy, Brian Clegg, make sure the legal staff is under the same conclusions that our lobbyists has been kind of helping us identify, as those projects that will maximize these points. So it's been a little bit back and forth, and so we should be able to share that probably prior to the 14th with the council, but certainly with the public that night.
And keep in mind too, when the steering committee or the working group meets on December 3rd, that is a public meeting. So I mean, your, your staff will be able to see this, go through the process. It will be very transparent, which was one of my goals as one of your council members.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a, I mean, obviously we'll be reasonable, but is there a limit to the number of projects that can be submitted?
No.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with the, the short timeframe and council being able to weigh in, but I mean, we have the utmost confidence in staff, and if they could submit a few, then that would lessen the concern about the council getting involved and making sure we have our priorities heard, so thank you.
The county let us know about a month ago, so we've been working on this for some time. And Ms. Peters probably can verify exactly when they sent out, but we, as soon as that information was shared with the municipalities, we began working on identifying how to target those projects that would maximize what we knew the criteria to be.
Thank you. Amy, thank you so much for coming.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for having me. It's a pleasure to be here.
The next presentation's regarding the 70th South Gateway Project, and Dave Mailer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. 70th South Gateway Project, back in 2007, a little bit of history, back in 2007, improving city aesthetics was a main topic in the strategic planning session. And in, in that strategic planning session, we received some direction from council to bring back a presentation, to present to council, going over gateways and different ideas and proposals. And some of you guys seen that presentation, and then based off of that, staff was directed to past, past administrations and, and city officials who were directed staff to focus on 70th South Gateway Project. In the presentation, there was 90th South, there was a couple areas on Redwood Road, but staff was directed to focus on the 90th South Gateway on the east side of the city coming out of the river bottoms. And then city, the city contacted, contracted with PEC based on that direction to go out for some design. And then with the design, it was completed in May of 2018. So this is just essentially coming back to this council to try to get a little direction, and we'll touch on the project briefly. The location is at 70th South and 1100, or 11,000 West. It's the east entrance coming down through the river bottoms. The property is owned by the city of West Jordan. And the project consists of bank stabilization by the use of retaining walls, drainage systems, landscaping, and then also there's some lighting features within the, the design. Intent of the project is to beautify the entrance coming up through the river bottom. As many of you know, our east bordering neighbors have done significant work through that section, beautified their section, and so the concept was to, to try to move up into our city and, and have kind of some aesthetically pleasing landscape up through that to complement our city as you move through. Currently, the site conditions is essentially just kind of cobble rock. And then, as you see in this picture, we have complementary weeds going up the, the hillside. And so as far as aesthetics go, I think we could probably do better than that, and you'll see some of the concept designs.
Dave, we've got a question right here.
Yep.
So when you talked about the property being owned by the city, are we talking about the north and the south?
North and the south, yeah.
I thought that prior conversations, we, we were under the impression that that north portion was owned by the HOA that lives right there. There are some erosion issues in the cobble and all of that, so that is actually owned by the city.
Yeah, it's owned by the city. The erosion issues are from the, the adjacent property owners. They've put their downscout drains coming off of their houses over onto our property, and then it's eroded the hill. And we've, within the design, we've talked to our consultants about that, our concerns about that, and they've put a sufficient design to try to address some of those drainage issues on that hillside.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, because if memory serves, the prior conversations, we had focused primarily on the south, thinking that they had responsibility for the north, so knowing that we can actually take the action on both is beneficial something. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
And Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I notice our adjoining city has done a great deal of work, as you had mentioned, and, and one of the other things they did, which I thought was smart and didn't cost a lot of money, is they renamed that road. And I can't remember what it is, it's River something, like River Bend or River View or something. And I think it would be great if we just took that and used whatever name they chose and keep it going through our city as we go on that road. So people don't have to wonder if they're on 70th South or 72nd South, they'll know they're on River Bend or whatever that is. And that wouldn't be a, a large expense, it would be an expense, but not as large as some of these others we're looking at, in addition to doing this. And that's something we could do immediately, if the council liked that idea.
Please continue.
Okay, thank you. So staff worked with our PEC, our consultants in design, and they come up, we started working with a concept design. Essentially, there's a lot of topography along that section of roadway, and so we had to do a lot of retaining work. And then we used also some turf areas to soften some of it, and then quite a few planter beds. So this is just kind of what we started with as far as a concept design. As we worked through some design elements, we juggled back and forth between landscape boulders, some keystone block, and then we ended up settling with this verti block. The benefits of this verti block is that it's aesthetically pleasing, it's, it's very sound, and then it also addresses the drainage issue that we're going to have coming off the topography and off of, to try to retain that. So there's, there's a drainage element to this block also. And then in final design, I didn't have the, the pretty colored pictures to put up here for you. They do that in concept, but this is just a cut sheet off of the design. It shows essentially the, the retaining work, the heavily planted planter beds, and then also the turf areas. Getting into some of the problems with the, the, the project, the big one is currently the project is unfunded. There's no budget allocated for this project currently.
Do you have an architect's estimate on that?
I do. It's right here. So, the cost estimate, and then I threw a little inflation value in, into it, but the cost estimate, the engineer estimate was 1.3 million dollars for this project. And so essentially, with this being some past council and administrations' direction to staff, I just wanted to kind of refresh this and bring this back to you, so you guys can have new eyes on it, and see what your support is for this project. See if this is something you want staff to try to pursue, as far as trying to figure out where this funding could come from. And so that's, that's the point of this presentation today, so if you have any questions, I'd be willing to try to answer them for you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Dave, you may or may not know this, but it seems like maybe this was at that strategic planning meeting, but whenever I first learned of this, I, I mentioned that there were some grants available from the Water Conservation District. I want to know if we've applied for any of those.
If this project was to move forward, certainly. There's landscape, landscape leadership grants that are, now, when we're talking those grants, if I remember right, it's, it's a small amount in comparison to 1.3 million dollars, but it would help.
Yes, but every 50 dollars takes that down.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know what ongoing maintenance efforts would be and would cost for the design that was proposed?
It is, it is heavily planted. The concept that we had with this property would be to roll it over into our, our park strip landscape contract, and so we'd have to receive quotes on that. So I don't have any exact numbers to you, but if I had to throw out just some ballparks, it's probably going to be right around 4,000 to 6,000 dollars a year to maintain this.
Okay. And then if memory serves, we have a well that's right up in that area. Do we still have reasonable access? I didn't see anything that would allow for vehicular access up there, but I, it, it was pretty quick, so I may have missed it.
Yeah. We, we did work with Dave Murphy on that, and so, let me see if it's in the concept. It's not in the concept, but in the, in the final plan, it, it was addressed. There's a, a well on that east, on the southeast side portion there, and we do have kind of an accessway, so we did consider that in design.
Perfect. Thank, thank you very much. My, my two cents for what it's worth, I would, as much as I'd like to move forward with this right away, there are a number of projects that need to be considered as well, so my suggestion would be to keep this on the green sheets, so that can be reevaluated with each budget season, but then specifically have this brought up when we're looking at the expansion of 70th South. We know that project is on, is it on the five or 10-year master plan now? But this is something I think that we could easily incorporate with that, and might find some economies of scale as we're working with other contractors for that project, since it's ju- just a thought, just a potential option. But including this on the green sheet to review regularly.
And, and I agree with that. I think if there was even a way in which this could be phased, so that you could put some different phases on the green sheet, but to bite the entire elephant at one time might be difficult, but if there was a way in which you could design some phasing, so...
One, one more if I may, Mayor. I would have some questions for legal about the ramifications of modifying the topography on the north side of that, of 70th South. This is probably not the appropriate forum for that conversation, but I do have some very serious questions about any actions we may take there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We'll now move to our communications and go to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. If I can begin first by advising both the public and the city council that this Monday evening, November 12th, at 6:30 PM, we'll be presenting the Wild West Playground update for what will be Wild West Playground Version 2.0. The reality is, the Wild West Playground has been weathered by time and worn out by love. Please join us as we discuss how we will proceed as a city in designing Wild West Jordan's Playground 2.0. We will go over the vision of the future playground, why this decision was made, the project timeline, and after presentations, the West Jordan City will break into groups to answer questions and gather citizen input on the playground plans. I anticipate council members being present. It was really nice that Mayor Melissa Johnson spent the afternoon with us and provided a taped background in history about the playground. She was instrumental in putting together about 400 volunteers, worked for 10 straight days to build the playground, lots of love and effort to put that playground up. You'll be interested to hear her perspective 15 years later. It will be available and posted online tomorrow on Facebook. It'll be available for the council to share with, on their Facebook pages, pages as well. We have hopefully some presentation from council members yet to be taped by Monday, but it is going to be a really exciting time to sort of fix that location. It's a low point in the park. It collects a lot of water, and it's added to the aging of the playground. We're going to fix that reality. We are going to provide a gateway to what will potentially be the best park in the valley. It's going to take a little while to develop out, but we have some ideas that we'd like to share with the public. I know the council are looking at some really grand ideas for that location. I hope the public can join us. If they can't, maybe they can watch online and also be able to watch it if they can't catch it live on Monday night, pull it back up and watch it at another time. With that said, I'd like to also acknowledge, tonight is the last time that Chief Clint Peterson will be joining us as a member and staff of West Jordan. I want to thank him for his dedication, his commitment to the city. 18 years fighting for what is in the best interest of not only the community, the citizens, and the people he's worked with, and supported. So I thank you, Chief, for all you've done for this city. We're going to miss you. You're, were, you were instrumental in making sure we got nine new firefighters that will protect this community. So thank you, sir. With that said, I understand Scott Langford is going to make a comment.
Thank you, David. I just wanted to give the mayor and council, citizens here and online, a quick update on the Okra Mountain Resort development, approximately U11, 90th South. After the public hearing for that item several weeks ago, staff and the developer have been working diligently to address those comments and concerns brought up at the public hearing. We're continuing to draft a development agreement that will come back to the city council for consideration. Because it's a little bit of a moving target, and we're dealing with 220 acres, I just wanted to, to advise mainly the, the residents that discussions are ongoing, and we, we hope that we can provide a draft to the council for your comment as we work on this draft over the next couple of weeks. And then we're, we're shooting tentatively for the December 5th city council... And then we're shooting tentatively for the December 5th city council meeting to present that formally, but we will be sure to post that on the forthcoming agendas as it's fully drafted for consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
I believe that is all the comments of the council, or of the staff. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment to, we're going to move to council comments, but just to say to Chief Peterson, I had not met him until 13 years ago, and he and I were both recognized at our Christmas party. He is the manager of the year and me is the employee of the year, that year. And so I've gotten to know him very well over the years and have enjoyed all that time working with him. So I took a little liberty in being first on the council group tonight. And so with that on, I'm going to move on to start around the other end. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping for a few more minutes to gather my thoughts so I can make sure I articulated clearly my appreciation for Chief Peterson and all he's done. He very quickly and warmly welcomed me to the council. He's very professional and very good at what he does, but more importantly, on a personal level, you'll be hard pressed to find somebody who cares more about his community, more about his job, and more about his coworkers, or really more brothers and sisters than Chief Peterson. He is one of the finest individuals I've had the pleasure of working with, and I appreciate the friendship that you've shown me, the dedication for your career and to the men and women that you lead and you serve. Thank you. You'll very much be missed, but I hope you won't be an infrequent face at the various events that we have. And I love you. Thank you for all you've done. You'll be missed.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to express my gratitude and thanks to Chief Peterson for the work that you've done and the passion that you've shown and the improvements you've made in our city with our fire department and making it the best fire department of all the cities around. So thank you for being a part of all that. I also want to recognize we have a Boy Scout in the audience who is here today and helped us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's not his first visit here. He's been here before. It was good to see him again. There was another one here, but I see that he's already gone. But thank you for joining us at the city council meeting tonight. And remember, when it comes time for public comments, you are part of the public. You're welcome to share a comment with us. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's my turn, Chief Peterson, to say thank you as well. You know, when I first came on the council, Chief Peterson and the other staff members could easily say, oh, there's another council member. He'll be gone in four years. Don't need to worry about him. But nope, Chief Peterson reached out to me, and I got to know him, not as much as I'd probably like to, but I did get a chance to know him well and learn about the fire department that I didn't know as a citizen before. So thank you for showing me what you guys do and how much you love our city, and thank you for protecting our city. And I just know whatever you're going to do next week when you start your new career, you're going to be a positive person for whoever you're working with or whatever you do. So thank you. And then I just wanted to reiterate, last night was a kind of a different night for me, as I sat and watched the voting going on. And I wanted to thank all the citizens of West Jordan, even those who aren't here tonight, but maybe those that are online and listening. Thank you for getting out and voting. And thank you to all those citizens who ran. I see someone in the audience right now who put herself out there and ran, and you did a great job, and thank you for running. And, you know, everyone should get a chance to do something like that because even though I didn't have to worry about losing last night, I remember last year when I had to worry about that. And it was a good feeling to see those people that get out there and put themselves out there to serve cities and counties and states. And I'm so grateful for the voting process and for what it is, and I look forward to seeing the next year as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock.
I want to thank you also, Chief, for being here and for sharing your real thoughts. And I realize that in these settings it can be difficult, and we don't always see eye to eye, but I think it's important to convey what we really feel. So thank you for being willing to put yourself out and to step up into a position that maybe wasn't what you chose. So thank you. On the Healthy West Jordan Committee, they've developed a new logo, and it's wonderful. It incorporates our city logo with their logo. And beginning, I think, in January, I think it's January that we begin, there will be the Healthy West Jordan. It's a friendly little competition, so if anyone wants to come and participate, look for information on that to be released soon.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for reversing the order, is what I'll say. And I'm going to save the best for last. So first thing I'm going to do is, this past week, I was able to go to a scout troop and talk about the city and was able to relay to them about water conservation and what goes in recycling bins. And most everybody there did not know the consumption or what goes in the blue bin, so we did some education that way. Also wanted to thank those that ran. I've been on both ends, the losing end and a winning end, and there's a lot of emotions and a lot of anxious time looking and pondering what could you have done better or relishing that the message was successfully delivered. And it's just wonderful to see people get engaged in their community, and the turnout was incredible this time, and I'm grateful for that. Also, third out of four, I was able to go to a ribbon cutting for the new Quick Quack Car Wash on 7800 South. It's in District 4. And right now, they are doing 10 days, it started today, but 10 days of free car washes. So if you want to try it out, it's a West Jordan business, free car wash. My wife did it today. It's just good to see our economic development department working to bring business in and doing the things that we need to do as a city. Best for last, Chief Peterson, I just want to say thank you. When this council, the prior council was filling a vacancy that Dave Newton eventually received, the question we asked the candidates is what is your passion? And we don't need to ask that of you. I know your passion, and you are an exemplar of that passion in the fire department, and the city will definitely miss you, and I appreciate your passion for public safety in the city of West Jordan, and our residents are grateful for your service. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. If that's all the communications, then we'll move on to citizen comments. This will be the only opportunity this evening for citizens to speak. There are no public hearings. So if you are here to discuss anything, whether it is something that is on the consent calendar, a business item, or something that is not on the agenda, this will be your only opportunity in the meeting to discuss those things. And as a reminder, you have a three-minute time limit, and we'll start with those that have signed up, and that is first Beth Hogan.
Mayor, and councilmen, and others who are here, thank you for allowing me to be here. A few months ago, my husband Phil and I were talking about ways to add income to our income. We're both retired, and we thought, well, we have a large basement. We live in the Wildflower neighborhood. Most of the homes in there are quite nice, not rich or anything, but they're nice, and we have a basement that's available. So we were thinking, well, we could put, make an apartment in our basement and rent it out. So we approached the city of West Jordan, came and actually spoke to someone, and they told us that we could, but only if it's a relative, a blood relative. And so that's why I'm here today, to ask the city to consider, to reconsider that particular law. For us, it would provide an extra income as we're retired. Sometimes things just don't quite go around far enough, and it would also provide an income for other people as well, and also extra housing opportunities. From what we understand, they're hard to find, especially ones that are affordable. So we were told that it's, part of it is because the impact in the neighborhood, and we, as we thought about that, we thought, well, you know, whether you're having relatives in your basement or someone else in the basement, it seems to me like the impact would be the same. We understand that there are people in our neighborhood who are able to rent their entire houses. One of the concerns that we've seen with that is that the homes and the properties aren't very well taken care of, whereas if we were to rent our basement out, we would be assured that the home and the property would still be well taken care of. So again, we ask the city to reconsider that law. We know that Salt Lake City is talking about that, and hope that you'll think about that and possibly reconsider that. Thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you. I know Councilmember McConaughey wants to make a comment about that, but I'm going to ask our staff, Scott Langford, to get with you right as soon as we're through here. So Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this, okay, there we go. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your comments. Typically, this is when we just listen, so we don't typically respond to the folks who are speaking, but I'm going to throw a question out to Mr. Langford. The section of code that she was referencing, we've got our project to review, a lot of the code that's got to be updated in time for the change in form of government. Is this a portion that's currently on the radar to be reviewed?
After our last meeting last week, we received a direction to look at this section of code. We're in the process of creating a survey that will go out to all the residents of West Jordan. And based on that feedback, we'll be working diligently to look at this section. I'm not sure how it'll turn out at this point, but we are definitely looking at it.
Okay. And we've got our city attorney, he wants to...
And I would, Mayor, thank you. I would just add that there is a very high probability that the state legislature is going to address this in the upcoming session beginning the third week of January.
Anyone else that would like to address city council at this time, please come forward? Seeing none, we'll close the citizen comments and move to the consent calendar. The items that, I have not heard from anybody wanting to pull anything this evening, so Councilmember Anderson.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar items 8A as in alpha through and including 8E as in echo.
We have a motion from Councilmember Anderson. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And a second from Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion, Councilmember Burton.
I know I'm coming in late, but I would like to pull E, please.
E as in elephant? I think you might have to wait until after this motion that's on the table is motioned and seconded. So any discussion to that motion, then? Then let's vote on that motion.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
No.
Mayor Ryden?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Vote fails three to four. Oh, excuse me, three to three.
Okay, so now we can go back to another motion, Councilmember McConaughey.
Move to approve all consent items except E as in echo.
Councilmember Lamb?
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Lamb. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote on that one.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Mayor Ryden?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Vote passes five to one.
Okay, now we will go to item 8E on the agenda with this consent item, and Councilmember McConaughey. Who pulled it? Oh, okay, Councilmember Burton, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking for more information on this. I feel like this is written for one person, and I would like to see this done when we make our changes to our form of government is coming up, instead of doing a little piece here like this, it doesn't seem like to fit in. So I would prefer holding off on this until we look at how we're going to form the whole form of this for this position and just incorporate that into that when we make the changes, instead of making a change here and then making a change again in another year. So I would be opposed to making this change at this time.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I don't want to hold off on all of these things until the very last minute. So for me, if it makes sense to make the change, I don't have a problem with making it now as opposed to later, I guess. And this one, to me, makes sense to have everything in an office aligned, so for me, I'm okay with it.
Councilmember Anderson.
And unfortunately, I left my paper that I had written. As I read the code, there's some incongruency in this code that I think creates conflict. And I don't think it's directed towards an individual person. It's the system between the office of city manager and the office of the city clerk. And I wish I had maybe gone home and got that paper that I had written, but there was a section Title 1, 8C2, says the office of the city clerk shall be located within the office of the city manager. So we've already got one section of code that places the city clerk in the department of the city manager, but then later, it's like it creates its own department. So for me, this isn't about an individual. This is about structure, order, and being organized. And for me, this is something that is a change that we can make, that cleans this section of code up. And again, the one that, where the conflict to me is, occurs is in Title 1, Chapter 8, C, Section 2. And so for me, this is just a structured order that would fit any organization org chart.
Councilmember Burton.
So you don't think that if we make this change like that was written now, that that will carry over, or we'll have to make a change again next year because there won't be a city manager for that to apply to? So we'll have to make this change here, then we'll have to make change it again because this won't fit in the new form, correct?
I think, and the attorney probably can answer that, but probably would be a name change that instead of saying city manager, just say it was city administrator, and probably would still fall under that same department. But I would ask Mr. Wallace, he could respond to that.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Dave Quahley, who actually did the drafting on this, to share with you several of the inconsistencies in the operation that has nothing to do with individuals, to share some of those with you. One of them, for example, is that we do not have the position of assistant city manager in the city in the code. So that's something that's going to be addressed. And it doesn't mean you can't do it, because under Hutchinson, anything that's not prohibited in the state law, you can do, and you did that tonight by contract. But it's definitely not the norm to not have that called out in the ordinance. Another, anyway, I'll defer to Dave and let him tell you some of the technical changes that are here. As far as the question is the change in the form of government, as we begin to bring these titles to you, you're going to see that there's a number of definitions that are being changed. And in those definitions, the issue of this being an assistant city manager now versus an assistant city administrator in the future is one of the things that is already addressed in some of the definitions that have yet to be brought to you. And then you'll also notice in the agreement you approved tonight with Mr. Lee, we've addressed that change. So Dave, why don't you go ahead and explain some of those other technicalities that you've worked on?
In addition to what Mr. Wallace said, this does just clean up and try to create a cleaner org chart, is the point of this. As it's in the council action form, the background discussion...
As it's in the council action form, the background discussion, City Code 1-7C1B, it identifies all of the departments of the city. And one of those specifically identified departments is the Office of the City Manager. Now, later in the code, let's see, what is that? Chapter 8, there's an article for each of the city departments that are previously identified in City Code. Each one of those departments has its own article, talks about its duties, so on and so forth, except for the Office of the City Manager. That's the only specifically identified department which does not have its own article. Now, in place of that, there is an article for the City Clerk Recorder. As identified earlier, that's a position that falls within the Office of the City Manager. So the confusion you get when you have the Office of the City, the Clerk Recorder identified in the department section is that department does not exist. It's not identified in our City Code anywhere, whereas the Office of the City Manager is. And the position of City Clerk falls within the identified department. So what the real goal of this is, is to create a consistent org chart within the structure of our code by creating the Office of the City Manager, identifying the City Clerk as an individual who works in that department of the city. Those are the real changes being made in addition to identifying a position of the Assistant City Manager so that position can fall within the Office of the City Manager as well as defining the duties of that position. As to the change of form of government, this is more of a substantive change as far as cleaning up the organizational chart. When we bring the changes for the form of government related to Title I, some of these changes would be more appropriate to be made now so that we can make a uniform change when we're addressing the form of government, so that at that time, all you're looking at as a council is changes that are specifically related to the change of form of government. I think it will get much more complex if you're looking at change of form of government plus some other substantive changes. So our goal is to try and bring you change of form of government only ordinance amendments when we do that. If we start mixing them with these types of cleanups, it may become more convoluted. So that's the background of why we believe this is a necessary text amendment.
Councilmember Anderson's question?
Oh, no, I didn't turn my mic off.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I appreciate about what's in here right now is we've broken out a separate section for duties of Assistant City Managers. And it also specifically calls out in that section, where did it go? It was right in front of me, that they are at-will employees. There it is. 1-8C2, Appointment of Assistant City Managers. The City Manager may appoint one or more qualified persons to serve as Assistant City Manager or Managers. Any appointed Assistant City Manager shall be at-will employee exempt from the merit protection described in Utah State Code or its successor provisions in City Code or policy. I think that it's very timely to make that update specifically. So if nothing more, then for that specific section for the Assistant City Manager, I would be supportive of approving this modification tonight. Thank you.
I see no more comments. Councilmember Lamb?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion that we approve ordinance 18-38, amending Title I, Chapter 8, Article C of the 2009 West Jordan City Code.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lamb. Councilmember Anderson?
I'll second it. Did you say ordinance 18-186?
18-38, correct? 18-38.
If I made, there was some confusion as to numbering that I believe Jamie cleaned up. Initially, this came out as a resolution with that number. The ordinance number is 18-38.
Okay, yeah, I'll second it.
So do you still, your second still stand?
Yep, it does.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Mayor Reiden?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Vote passes five to one.
Okay, we'll move to our business items. Business item 8, excuse me, 10A. Discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 18-179 regarding a master development agreement between CW Land Company LLC and the city of West Jordan regarding the development identified as Copper Rim CW Land Company. Collin Wright applicant, Scott Langford.
Thanks, Mayor. This has been a long time coming. I remember when I decided to come back to the city of West Jordan in August of 2015. This is one of the first meetings that I attended, this big design shred to talk about this 200-acre development. Over the passage of time, the city council approved a rezoning and land use map amendment in January 2017 and more recently, the preliminary development plan in May of this past year. This development agreement before you tonight does several things. It memorializes the already approved development plan with the approved maximum number of residential units at 753 dwelling units. It lists the master developer and the city's obligations regarding this development, including specific amenities that will be built, the timing of the installation of those amenities, as well as the construction of certain infrastructure, roads, water, sewer lines, et cetera, how the stormwater is going to be handled. It also provides language that will facilitate the future purchase of property for a city water tank. It goes into quite a bit of detail regarding the current reimbursement process the city has for any upsizing of utilities, including identifying specific system improvements that our engineers have already identified. And one of the good things about this particular development is that it also will facilitate future improved connectivity east-west. There's two bridges that are associated with this, one at 7400 South, the other at 70 South. And this development agreement also references the efforts that the city, the developer, and UDOT have had up to this point and will continue to have as we get to that point where these bridges go in. So there's a lot of detail. I would be remiss if I didn't show appreciation and thanks for Duncan Murray, for all the work that he's put into this specific agreement, as well as the other members of staff. But we're here prepared to answer any questions the council may have. I know Greg Day, representative of the developer, is here as well if questions have come. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Is that the best spot for a water tank, right in the middle of commercial space?
There have been, there were two spots for that based on elevation. I believe Mr. Stoker could probably speak more to the specifics of the placement of that tank.
As Mr. Langford says, the elevation of water tanks is very specific to elevation. And the location for the water tank was defined and identified long before the idea of putting commercial zone was there because of that elevation. There's been talks about moving it because it is commercial property and the developer has asked that we pay commercial rates for that property. But so far, we haven't been able to find an acceptable alternative that meets the needs of the water zone.
Because I just worry that as you go north of the water tank, kind of along the Mountain View corridor, right away, you know, as you're going north towards the Phase 2, that that will be unusable as commercial space. I don't, it's going to be hidden from 78th. It's just not going to be visible. So then now we don't have as much commercial space set aside. So that's one concern that I have. And I understand about, you know, tanks have to be in specific places based on elevation. It's not my most favorite location in the middle of commercial space. And what's the average size of these lots? I don't remember and I can't read the legend there. Do we know?
Not off the top of my head, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you give me some more information on the bridges? Where are the locations again? You said 78th and 70th, was it?
70th, yeah. I'll point to them. Well, I'll try to point to them.
So as I'm looking on there, the one with the round about the middle, is that 78th?
This, or so, can you see the pointer there on your screen? I believe it's showing up. So this is the approximate alignment of 7400 South. It'll come across. This is where that bridge would go across the Mountain View corridor. As you head north, you get up to 70 South, and there's another bridge planned at that crossing.
So is that bridge the responsibility of the developer, both those bridges?
That's where I would have to defer to Dave Murphy or Public Works. My understanding is that as part of the first environmental study, the agreement was that if the roads are stubbed to both sides of those bridges, UDOT would be under the responsibility to pay for that bridge. Is that correct?
That is, that's correct. Once the road is connected up to, including the embankments on both sides of the road, UDOT is obligated to build the bridge.
Do we have any timeframe from when UDOT does their project after we put this stuff out, Tim?
No, as everything, everything's based upon funding. And so it's similar to the 8600 South Bridge that the city is currently working through. As we build those roads, we make those connections to both sides of Mountain View and we get those embankments in place, it then triggers that clause for the Mountain View project. And then pending funding, UDOT builds those overpasses. And so it could be several years.
We provide the funding or UDOT provides?
No, UDOT provides the funding as part of the Mountain View project.
Okay. And then my other question is, the one on 70th, I can see that would be very nice to have done for providing transportation there. The one at 74th, I'm not sure how helpful that will be. Can you give me some insight on that?
I wish I had a larger view of this area. There's quite a bit of residential development existing and planned for that side of the corridor.
On the west side?
The west side of Mountain View corridor, the Maples, Maple Hills. We've got several requests in to develop other property just on the west side of Mountain View corridor. So it will provide a positive connection. I know recently that the school district has realigned some boundaries. This potentially would provide a more convenient access to Falcon Ridge Elementary School. The school district also owns property directly next to Falcon Ridge for a future middle school. So it'll provide some really important connectivity for that community in the future.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Previously, I believe we saw the Trails Master Plan, how it incorporated this area and then tied through. Does that run through or require 7400 South? Are there any trails that would connect to the west side of Mountain View through there?
There will just be sidewalks planned for this road alignment. There will be a slight extension of the Trails Master Plan through this corridor, this dry wash. It really doesn't go much further to the east. It hits 5600 West into the 5490 neighborhood and just stops. So there will be some limited trails and the developer will be providing that. We'll have access, public easement for trail access. They will be maintaining that with their HOA. But it's just, it's a little isolated up in this corner of the city.
And then one last request, and that would be is we have changes like this and things that come up. If these attachments could be provided with the rest of the packet at the time of publication so we can get a little bit of a look and we can ask some of these questions before it comes out. Same thing when we had the conversation earlier for the presentation on 70 South, we didn't have an attachment on the agenda for that one to look at so that we could formulate these questions prior to here. It's really helpful for us to not be in a position to kind of put you on the spot and ask for something that you don't have. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, wondering, some questions I have on how close the development is to the road. I want to start with 70 South, right next to Falcon Ridge Elementary. The road's a little bit wider there, and I've heard people complain about, right when you pass the school, it turns into a little tiny two-lane road. The way this phase is set up, is it set up so that that road will be the same width all the way to Mountain View corridor? Because if you look at this photo right here, it looks like Phase 8 kind of jets into the road. So my hope would be that as we are planning and moving forward, that that road is planned to be as wide as it is from Falcon Ridge clear to the Mountain West corridor.
Yes, that is the plan, and it's hard to see the detail here. This is just an overall vision of it. But yes, that will meet the city's standard roadway width for 70 South, which is already existing in parts. 70 South and that, and this part of the city is, it's kind of been piecemealed. The development to the north was built in the county annexed in, and so it doesn't, it's not always consistent. But with new development, we will get that consistency.
The reason I'm bringing that up is currently on 13th West where I live, the new apartment complex is going in there and there's an entrance coming out, and I've seen how they're putting in their gutters and sidewalk that don't match up with how 13th will be put together. And I don't know if that's a fault of the city for not telling them or if they just didn't care and put it in. So my worry is that we'll get to the phases and they'll build this, and then we'll sort of have that road wide enough. It's just going to be that two-lane road again that's very tiny. So I want to make sure that we're planning ahead on that. The second thing I wonder about, and I don't know if this is really a staff question or if it's a question for the council, is how close this is to Mountain View corridor. Now, we've already seen with Bangor Highway, not only in West Jordan, but now South Jordan and beyond, that they're building homes so close to Bangor that they're having to go on out and tear out all these homes to put in interchanges. Is this made, as far as as close it is to Mountain View corridor, is it made so that there's room to grow Mountain View corridor so we don't have to come and tear out homes in 20 years from now?
Yeah, as part of the planning for Mountain View corridor, UDOT aggressively acquired the needed right-of-way for full build-out, full freeway. And so that existing right-of-way line, although again, we're looking at a real zoomed-out version, it will accommodate that full build-out for Mountain View freeway.
Okay. Those are my only worries. I don't want to come to these citizens. In some cases in South Jordan, they've had their homes for five years next to Bangor Highway. Now they're losing their homes. And I want to make sure if we're going to do this right, smart planning, planning ahead, make sure that we're far enough away from the corridor that there is room to widen this road in 20 or 30 years, when it's probably going to need to be widened. So, thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Sure, I have one more comment. I found some additional detailed maps. And there's up by Phase 8 and 9, it's a very high-density residential. And we have that 70 South that will end in the future at Airport Road because we have Airport Number 2. So we're putting a lot of traffic. Is 70 South from Mountain View to Airport Road still designed to be a two-lane road with a center turn lane? Or is it going to be, is it on any plan for any kind of widening, Justin?
According to the Transportation Master Plan, which was done by Horix Engineers, it is designed to be a two-lane road between Airport Road and U111.
Okay, so it's going to stay a two-lane road with the center turn lane?
That's correct. 7800 South is the arterial in that area.
That's the only one.
It's the nearest one in West Jordan.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions for staff? Seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like, no one else wants to make a motion tonight, so.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Can I give you a statement then, a motion?
Sure.
Because this was already rezoned before I joined the council, I'm happy that this is coming in a form with a development agreement, so I know when things are going to be put in and that there's an agreement that they will be put in. That adds quite a bit of comfort to me in, in decisions like this. Um, so I will give you a motion. Uh, I move to approve Resolution eighteen-one-seventy-nine, authorizing the mayor to execute a master development agreement between CW Land Company LLC and the city regarding the development identified as Copper Rim.
We have a motion try from Councilmember Whitelock? And do we have a second? Councilmember McConaughey?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a lot of work. Um, this has been, as Mr. Langford mentioned, this has been going on for years. There have been a significant number of conversations with multiple councils, a lot of revisions, a lot of changes. There's been a ton of work that has gone into this. Um, I want to commend staff and also the developer. Um, the developer went above and beyond, uh, engaging with the city council when this was still in its conceptual phase. I remember going over and meeting with them over at the community room in the, uh, Justice, um, building, and, and seeing what they had envisioned. And there's been a lot of back and forth and a lot of work as we've tried to develop this. The one, there's two things that I'm a little, I, I, I wish would have, could have been done a little bit better. That commercial phase down at the bottom, um, I wish we didn't have the water tank in the middle, but we kind of need water for the residents, so, um, we're okay living with that. But also, Mountain View corridor, um, it's a separate issue, but, and it's been stated multiple times from the dais that I wish we could have had the planning done in such a way that we could have had, uh, frontage roads on Mountain View corridor. That was done long before any of the councils I participated with, long before this developer brought the project, so no fault on any of them. Um, but staff have been working the best that they can to, uh, accommodate some of the needs. And that's where you see some of these extras, like the bridges at Seventy and Seventy-four. I, I, I hope the minimal discussion that we've had doesn't make it seem like this was quick and easy and just sort of rubber stamping something that came through. This has been going on for, um, I'm trying to remember how many years now. I think we had conversations even, no, we had conversations even before twenty-fifteen. That's when the, uh, land use was done. I believe it was a year, year and a half before that, that, uh, we, we first spoke about that. So I just wanted to say thank you to all involved and make sure to underscore the amount of effort and work and compromise that went into this. So thank you again to the developer and to staff.
Councilmember Whitelock?
And I want to point out that we were given this document, so it's a pretty good document to be able to, you know, read, and, and I want to thank staff for answering my questions. They're always very gracious to answer whatever I ask and, and give me the information and, and just thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
As much as I want to say yes, I'm going to say no.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor writing?
No.
Vote passes four to two.
Business item ten B, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution eighteen-dash-one-eighty, regarding updating business license fees, Brock Hudson.
Uh, council, I would like to, Mayor and council, would like to bring this back the first week of December, please, if that would be okay with you? The first council meeting of December, not the first week of December, excuse me.
Councilmember McConaughey?
I move to table this item till appropriate.
Councilmember Anderson?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote. Can we? I guess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Business item ten C. Discussing of possible action regarding ordinance eighteen-dash-thirty-five, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Title thirteen, zoning regulations, sections thirteen-dash-twelve-dash-C, six-C point one, thirteen-dash-twelve-dash-six-C point five, thirteen-dash-five-B-dash-seven-D point two, and thirteen-dash-five-B-dash-seven-D point three regarding residential parking requirements, citywide applicability, city of West Jordan applicant, Scott Langford.
Thanks, Mayor and council. Uh, this item was heard at a public hearing, uh, your, uh, previous council meeting. Uh, we're here to answer any questions, Larry Gardner's here, uh, and, uh, if, yeah, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to, to ask us.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I guess we can go ahead and ask for a motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for, uh, five-minute recess.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five-minute recess. Check the time. It'll take fifteen seconds for Alan to get back to his chair. Like to call our city council meeting back to order? And we are still working on, um, business item ten C. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for you. I'm going to still, Councilmember Burton's thunder if he's okay with it. Um, and just get some clarification on E-one. This is the parking restrictions in single-family and duplex areas. It seems like this is kind of interpreted, i- it's all in one paragraph, but it seems like it's almost two separate issues. Item number one talks about the required parking, and all driveways leading to parking shall be constructed of concrete or, or asphalt. And then it carries on to the next sentence, but it seems like this should be a separate block for additional parking spaces. And I just want to clarify that if somebody has like a garage in the backyard or something like that, or side parking, RV parking on the side, it appears to me that we're okay with gravel, as long as it's three-quarter inch, uh, or large or gravel mix. Um, and then, and it does mention that a few times, and then goes on to say it would have to be four inches thick. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Absolutely, you're reading it correctly, and, um, in this, the three-quarter inch gravel makes pavers, asphalt, concrete, rock, stone, that's in the ordinance currently. Um, the issue with, uh, that we were having with gravel parking for other parking is that people would put down the bare minimum, and weeds would grow and trash. And, and so, we felt that a four-inch layer of gravel will prevent that weed growth and protra- mud tracking. You put a skim coat of gravel on and, and drive on it, and then it's not long, long before you're tracking mud into the street and that type of thing.
Okay. When it comes time for motion, um, I might make the request that this be broken into one, number one for the required parking, and number two for the additional parking.
That's no problem, I can do that.
Okay.
If you want to do that, just direct that right now, I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, when, when it comes time for the motion, I'll, I'd love to include that, just to make it a little bit cleaner and easier to read. And then the other one that I wanted to debate, um, actually, I think some of us wanted to debate. This is thirteen-dash-five-B-dash-seven-D, so if you're on the electronic version, this is page three out of twenty-two. And this is, uh, number one, location of watercraft trailers, campers, recreational vehicles, motorhomes, so on. Uh, number one, any portion of a parked or stored watercraft trailer, camper, RV, or motorhome may be stored in the rear and or side yard and may extend into the front yard, but shall not be closer than ten feet from the edge of the sidewalk nearest the home or structure. Or if there's no sidewalk, no closer than ten feet from the front property line. Um, we had a little bit of conversation about the distance last council meeting, uh, when this was discussed, and I believe there was some interest in talking about that distance a little bit more. Um, personally for me, I would be okay with two feet from the edge of the sidewalk and then ten feet from the property line if there's no sidewalk or curb or something like that. I think this disproportionately affects those who are in the, like, some of the older areas that don't have, uh, sidewalks, or, um, you've just got the, the curb gutter, and then they can go ten feet to the property line, so they got more place to, to put stuff, versus somebody who has a sidewalk that has to go any, even ten foot beyond that, so they could potentially be twenty foot off the property line. Um, but I'd be curious to hear what others think about that distance requirement.
Yeah. And, can I comment, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the staff recommendation with the planning commission was three feet. The current ordinance is ten feet now, and the city council in two thousand and four, when they passed that, felt that ten feet, uh, would improve the aesthetic, um, of the city. And when I drafted this ordinance, I drafted it at three feet for exactly the reasons you're mentioning. Um, but the planning commission, uh, did not want to violate that ten-foot, um, uh, setback requirement, so to speak. In fact, they wanted to move up back of the, the front setback line of the house, and I talked them out of that, because that would have been, uh, enforcement nightmare too, really enforcement nightmare. And so, anyway.
Councilmember Whitelock? Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Anderson's up first, sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, page two, i- in my printed packet, it's, uh, uh, general information analysis, part two, sub E-one, that, that Councilmember McConaughey spoke about. On the minimum depth of four inches, is that, is that been, do we have any studies or documentation that four inches will keep weeds from growing and maintain? Or could they go less and maybe put down a, a weed-preventing fabric?
In another, uh, place that I worked, we would follow the Salt Lake County Health ordinances, and that is their minimum depth, or they feel like that, uh, with a four, four-inch depth and there are animals, then plants and things and debris generally doesn't collect, and so you can't have harbory of rodents and that type of thing. And so that's exactly where I got it from, was out of the Valley Health ordinance, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then the one that he also just mentioned, thirteen-dash-five-B-dash-seven-D-one, um, about storing in the front yard, the ten-foot setback. Um, if we go up two or three feet, like, I, I know there are several houses in District Four that I've been to where the driveway, there are corner lot and the driveway is on the corner side of the street. And so I don't know how that applies on the triangulation on perpendicular streets, if I'm on a corner lot. If, if that gets addressed, uh, separate from, from this.
You mean a clear, clear view issue?
Yeah, so you have a line of sight.
Yeah.
Isn't called triangulation or something like that?
Generally, um, there, Bill Baranasker, Traffic Engineer, has a much more sophisticated way of, of developing a site triangle. The old rule has always been fifteen feet from the intersection back, and then you draw a triangle. And so, uh, our ordinance, in the zoning ordinance, it has that, but so that is enforceable.
Right, but, but three feet on a corner lot, as I prescribed, that would not give you the line of sight.
That would violate the, the site distance.
So then, is that something that you send community preservation out to go and?
Yes.
Sight them to back up their RV and other?
I don't know, sight them, but at least it'll make them aware of what the ordinance is, and so.
Well, that raises a question, though, if we did, i- if that did get changed to three feet, would you have to include that? I, I think, I think it would have to be included for the line of sight on a corner lot.
And, so, really, the intent was never to allow trailers to park on a corner side. I know it happens. But the intent, as you see, is side yard and rear yard. There's a difference between a corner side and a side yard. Side yard means interior side, where corner side would be specifically spelled out. Side yard means interior side, where corner side would be specifically spelled out, so.
Okay, that's, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Councilmember, uh, Whitelock. Scott, wait, Scott, you jumped in there.
Sorry about that. Just to clarify, there, there is a, a very, there's a specific provision in the zoning ordinance that, uh, that states that, that the most restrictive, uh, uh, requirement will, will prevail if there's a conflict in the case of the clear view triangle like Mr. Gardner indicated. Um, we've got enough clarity in the code for our code enforcement officers to go out and if they are creating a safety issue, uh, on a corner, that, that's very clear. We can point to chapter and verse in our, in our ordinance and, and, uh, and so I really don't see that as, as being an influ- a, a, a problem here, so, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock.
So I just want to voice again that for my comfort level, a motorized vehicle would be on a solid surface. Um, and, and I wouldn't be comfortable with two feet. Three feet I could, but two feet I just don't think the line of sight's well enough for people backing out. So I, I would be okay changing that, but not, not to two feet, so those are my thoughts.
Any further discussion? Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm not going to try to address it at this point, but something I will try to bring up, uh, a little bit further down the road is number three. Could you scroll just a little bit? Thank you. This is one that's got me thinking a little bit, um, and I, and I mentioned this last time. Um, this is proposing changing this to say. It says it, I'm still on, there we go, okay. Um, it says that, uh, some, the, the trailer may be occupied, um, up to no more than fourteen days per year, so two weeks per year. And at first thought, it sounds like, you know, that's probably a good thing. I, I think councilmember Jacob was the one who, uh, pointed out the idea of Cousin Eddie living out in front of the home, home for the holidays and then overstaying his welcome. Um, but what quickly comes to my mind is a relative of mine who has a significantly diminished mental capacity. And, uh, what my, what, what was able to be done is there was a, uh, portion set up in the backyard. We were able to hook up proper utilities, so he could have sewage, have water, have, uh, electrical, everything that he needed out there and be able to live out there somewhat independently. Um, and I worry about making sure that we, we allow for those types of scenarios. I think the more appropriate approach would probably be allowing something like that through a conditional use permit to make sure that everything is available. And I don't think it would be appropriate to make a blanket, um, adjustment here. But I just wanted to bring that up for staff to think about and for the council, because that, that, that is something that does concern me. Um, we also have a, a child with special needs, so looking at what we've seen before with our family and contemplating where things might end up in the future, making sure that we have as many options as possible to take care of our family so it doesn't fall on society to fill in the gaps, um, because of oversights in legislation. So I, I, I just want to throw that out for consideration. If there are no other, um, comments, I think I'm ready to make a motion. Part of it, part of me is deciding whether I want to, oh, I'm looking at the wrong screen here, I need to look at mine and then it'll actually scroll. Debating on whether or not we should notate that distance from the curb in metric or period. Metric is so much easier, you just move decimals. So I move, uh, to approve ordinance eighteen dash thirty-five with the following modifications. First, um, section E is broken out into paragraph one and adds paragraph two. Paragraph two starts with additional parking spaces. That's the first modification. And then modification number two, uh, Scott, if you could scroll down, um, is changing three feet, or excuse me, changing, um, ten feet from the edge of the sidewalk to three feet from the edge of the sidewalk, but leaving no closer than ten feet from the property line if there is no sidewalk, leaving that ten foot there.
Do you need to add that if there is no sidewalk, because it says front property line period?
It, it does already have that. Or in the case of no sidewalk, no closer than ten feet from the front property line.
Okay.
It's not, not changing on that one, not in yellow. Those are the two changes, uh, with my motion.
I'll second.
We have a. A motion by councilmember McConaughey and a second by councilmember Anderson, discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton.
I, I'm not sure how to say this, so I'll just say it and see if anyone has any feelings, feelings on it. So that the fourteen consecutive days was changed to calendar days, which makes sense because they could come in for fourteen days, move out for a day, come in for fourteen days, move out for a day. Also by making that change, that's a dramatic change to fourteen for the entire year, whereas I can see that that is extremely limiting because often you have guests come for a week or two and leave for a month or two and come for a week or two. So would anyone be interested in, in maybe changing that fourteen days to, I don't know. Well, no, I don't, considering it doesn't work.
Councilmember Anderson. Thank you, Mayor, and I, I want to touch a little bit on what councilmember Burton said because, um, I have a, I had a family member, elderly person, um, that was the mother of my mother-in-law. And they would alternate in taking care of her. She had, uh, she was going through Alzheimer's and they brought a trailer in and so this family would just rotate turns taking care of grandma. And they would park it in their, on their property, it wasn't out on the road, and they would do it for a month and then move to another family and move to another family. Um, so that, I think there are some, some real advantages to, you know, if it's not on the street, that's, you know, it was in mid veil tucked in the, in the, uh, by the garage setback, you know, kind of in the backyard. But I, I think there's some, some argument for that.
Mayor, can I, can I interject something?
Sure.
There is a way to deal with this other than, um, changing this ordinance. This ordinance is very specific, trying to prevent the startup trailer parks in large lot zoning in West Jordan. Um, we have in the past, um, issued a temporary condition, or a conditional use permit, an administrative conditional use permit, uh, for this exact type of situation where someone is like your relative or they need to stay for six months. Uh, they could come and apply for administrative conditional use. It'd be a public hearing held upstairs in the, in the development service office. And we would issue a conditional, uh, use, conditional use permit based upon a timeframe that they would set up. And it, it does have the ability to be extended, uh, to one year. Uh, but what we would look at is, is to make sure that, um, there's safety with the drop cords running to the, to the temp, the, uh, recreational vehicle, uh, there's not going to be a sanitation issue with dumping of sewer, that type of thing. And so, um, I would much prefer to do it that way than to, to change this, so, but I don't know.
And as part of that, as part of that process, uh, we do, uh, noticing, uh, three hundred feet to all property owners and so you, you would be, uh, making your neighbors aware of, of that situation.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate the comment. Um, I, I think separate from this motion, it might be expedient to ask staff to come back with recommendations or formalization of a process for that. But also take into consideration the small homes that councilmember Lamb spoke about a few, uh, city council meetings ago where we were, uh, we, we had a conversation about, is this a vehicle, is this a dwelling unit, how does, how does this fall? Um, it might be beneficial to look at all of that together. Haven't heard too much else from the rest of the council on that one, but I would amend my motion to be approval with those two changes that were mentioned before. And then change number three would be changing this from fourteen calendar days to twenty-one calendar days. Would the second still stand?
Yes, I'll second that.
Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Reiden?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes five to one.
This is item ten D, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance eighteen dash thirty-six amending the two thousand and nine West Jordan municipal. City of West Jordan, applicant Scott Langford.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're here to answer any questions that you may have. This, uh, was, uh, at your last council meeting as a public hearing. And so Larry Gardner is, is here if you have any questions.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so clarification on this one, this is the one that, um, we carved out some provisions for rural residential. Not, we didn't carve out provisions, we carved out some exemptions for them. Can you remind me where in here it talks about height and what the impact on height? Let's say we've got.
Um, before, the ordinance was just kind of, um, really descriptive. Never got a really bad copy, but if you go to, you gotta pull that up, Scott, or see if we get to the table.
The yellow versions are so much easier to read.
Um, anyway, if you go to the table, uh, this table, it is setback on height requirement. If you look, um, at the rural residential zone and then go with no permit, then of course the corner yard setback would be eight feet and the front yard would be thirty feet. So that matches, uh, the setbacks, uh, of the home, okay? And if you go down, uh, further, the maximum height would be twenty-five feet.
So I'm looking at here, number twelve, this is the electronic version, page twenty out of twenty-one.
Yeah. So if you look at RR and then follow that down, no matter if it.
One foot for each foot in addition of seventeen?
No, not in the rural residential, there, it can be, uh, the maximum height of twenty-five feet.
Okay.
And the, the reasoning there is that in rural residential zones, the lots are larger, the houses are farther apart. And so this type of, uh, building is, is, uh, appropriate for a rural residential zone. The other thing we did is, um, the change in a rural residential zone allows them to be located in the front yard area as long as they meet the thirty-foot, uh, setback from the property line.
Front yard or the corner as well.
Yeah.
Those were the two big concerns. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I'm looking for the appropriate language for the motion, but the motion recommended here is we move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation.
I'm sorry about that.
What's the ordinance number on this one?
The ordinance number is. It's eighteen one thirty, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen dash thirty-six.
I move to approve ordinance eighteen dash thirty-six.
We have a motion from councilmember McConaughey.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Reiden?
Yes.
And councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes six to zero.
Business item ten E, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance eighteen dash thirty-seven, amending the two thousand and nine West Jordan municipal code Title thirteen, zoning regulations, section thirteen dash six J regarding residential overlay district, ROD. Citywide applicability, city of West Jordan, applicant Scott Langford.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, this was presented, uh, at length at our last, uh, council meeting. I, uh, I spoke a lot about that, uh, at the former meeting, but, uh, I, I still would like to express, uh, my support for this particular ordinance in the fact that it would give the council some flexibility and another zoning, uh, tool, if you will, uh, if you choose to, to implement it. So again, Larry and I are here for any, any specific questions you may have.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, does this apply just to existing or would, can we use this on new? If there was a new project, would we need this at all?
This would only apply to, to older developments, fifteen years and older.
Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. But as other areas age, they could become eligible for this one once they hit that fifteen years, correct? Okay. Um, I didn't see anybody else's light go up, so I'm ready to make a motion on this one as well. But first I want to apologize because if I, 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 I should have caught that Mr. Milich was here and made a motion to amend the order, the agenda, so he didn't have to sit through everything else. I don't believe there was anyone else here for the others, but apologies and thank you for joining us. Always a pleasure to have you here. I appreciate what you do for the city. Um, with that, I move to approve ordinance eighteen dash thirty-seven.
We have a motion. Councilmember Anderson?
And I'll second that.
We have a second, a motion by councilmember McConaughey, a second by councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion, councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll be short because I shared most of my thoughts last time when we had council conversation, but, um, I'm very supportive of this because this is something that gives additional flexibility to the council and gives tools to the council. It's not an automatic entitlement for any property owner. If they want to make a change that would bring those residential components into the commercial area, it's something that the council has a lot of flexibility and, um, uh, ability to really help make sure that we get the best mix for our city. So I, I see this as giving us another tool that we can use to help meet the needs and the concerns of the residents that are out here. And, um, that, that's why I'm.
As well, for a lot of the same reasons that councilman McConaughey stated. Uh, we receive a lot of, I could almost say pressure from the legislature, from the many folks that, uh, uh, we need to take a good hard look at where we have higher density in our city. And I think this gives the city council some flexibility and the planning department some flexibility to try to, to accommodate some of this, take care of some of this pressure. Councilmember Burton.
Very detailed, I guess, is what, when these projects come up because I want to make sure that we're not just taking some apartments in a parking lot and saying, hey, you know, the, the commercial system wasn't going, we're just some apartments in there. I want to keep the commercial in there in addition to adding the residential there and, and make it so it fits in without the residential feeling like they're just stuck in a corner and it just sucks them apartments just because there was a spot there for them. And I, I think the best example is brought up and we talked before about some of those projects that are happening up in Park City, which are done very tastefully. And so I'm going to be voting for this, but I'm going to want those other projects to be extremely tasteful to make sure it helps the city look and feel good and not just another apartment complex. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I feel like our residents have told me, for the most part, that we have enough high density, and I really want to see more commercial, and so, that's, those are just my feelings. So, for me, this, this doesn't accomplish either of those.
Seeing no more comments, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Mayor Reiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
No.
Vote passes four to two.
Item eleven, remarks. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, as I expressed appreciation for Chief Peterson, on behalf of myself, and on behalf of the residents of my district, who I represent, I did not express appreciation specifically for my family. My wife is watching online and corrected me for failing to recognize the amount of time that you've put in with us personally, outside of city responsibilities, and, and the kindness and friendship you've shown. I can't tell you how many times I, I mentioned earlier, we have a special needs son, and the fire department has been fantastic about always welcoming us with, with open arms when he needs to go there, and it's a, a big treat for him to see what he calls the fire truck men, over at the firehouse, over at the fire truck house. Chief Peterson is always there, he's been so, so very friendly and accommodating to my family personally. Again, we love you and appreciate what you've done over the, the years with the city, appreciate what values you've instilled and encouraged among the firefighters here. From my family personally, thank you for what you've done, we love you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other remarks? And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Never mind.
We vote, or we just, we vote, let's vote. We do that one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.